I'd like to call the meeting of the January 27th City Council meeting to order tonight. Clerk, please call the roll.
I'm Sheldon here. James Grubel.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Ekblon.
Here.
Ryan Hart.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Here. This time we ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invitation which will be read by Reverend Dr. William Blair of the New Creation of Somebody of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. My Lord, my God, my Savior, listen to the petitions of your servants and your people. A new mayor and council grace this hall tonight. The hopes and dreams of our citizens are also here. For the work and will manifest today determines the well-being of those who live and work and play in this fair city. To have the privilege of influence is indeed a sacred trust, not held lightly. Bless us with your presence, guide us with your light, fill us with your spirit and wisdom, so that which takes place tonight, those things which begin in this chamber honor you and create happiness, peace, and prosperity for our people. Amen. Thank you. I would ask at this time for approval of the minutes from the December 30th, 2019, January 1st, 2020, voting sessions. Will be by Councilwoman Ekblon. At this time, are we having messages from the mayor?
Council members, in accordance with the authority vested in by the bylaws of the Fenton Historical Society of Jamestown, you hear about now, Amy Grubel, 19 Whittier Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Fenton Historical Society. Board of Prestige's term to expire December 31, 2021. Leslie Dietrich Jr., 153 Galway Street, to be appointed Level of Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission. The Phil Young's expired term of Albert Russell resigned. Term to expire December 31, 2022. Jennifer R. Williams, 312 Haynes Street, to be appointed City Clerk Treasurer. Term to expire December 31, 2023. Signed Edward Sun. Questionnaire.
Thank you. At this time, is there a motion to suspend the rules and act on the appointments this evening? So moved by Councilwoman Ekblon. Clerk, please call the council.
Counselor Sheldon.
Aye.
Grubel.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Ekblon.
Aye.
Ryan Hart.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye. Uh, we need a motion for the appointments.
So.
Moved by Councilwoman Nelson. Clerk, please call the council on the appointments.
Counselor Sheldon.
Aye.
Grubel.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Ekblon.
Aye.
Ryan Hart.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye. At this time, we'll have, ask the mayor to come up for the State of the City message.
Good evening, everyone. To Council President Olson, council members, and our residents. I am humbled to present the State of the City report on the status and future of the city of Jamestown. As the newly-elected mayor, I ask for your patience this evening as I go through my report. Lucky for all of you, I've only been on the job 27 days now, so not quite enough time to get myself in trouble, but more than enough to get a snapshot of the city's present state. Many of my remarks tonight will speak about the potential for growth, the reemergence of hope, and a vision for our city's future. However, I would be remiss if I didn't begin by speaking about the current fiscal reality the city faces. It's no secret that our city, my home, is fiscally distressed. We are the only city in the state of New York that has been added to property tax cap. We're one of the few cities where almost forty percent of our assessed value is tax-exempt. We're facing several lawsuits that can decimate our city's contingency or rainy day funds. Coupled with a disconnected workforce and poor employee job satisfaction, we are at a low point in the city's history. I want to be very clear. I am not saying that we're going into municipal bankruptcy or a control board, but I am saying that if we don't plan for future development, if we don't look at other revenue models, if we just sit back and keep this ship of a city afloat, we are one storm away from sinking. As captain of the ship, I will not let us go down without a fight. This ship is savable, but it requires more than just the people you see up here today. It requires us all to bring new ideas to the table, to help grow our community, and to take some new risks that maybe we weren't willing to do in the past. On September 29th, 1971, Governor Rockefeller came to Jamestown to dedicate this very city hall. In a crowd of four thousand people, he closed out his dedication speech with the following: "This new city hall symbolizes the choice you have made for Jamestown. You have chosen initiative over complacency. You have chosen progress over decline. In many ways, this is a far different city than it was long ago, but the spirit that tamed a wilderness along Chautauqua Lake and the vision that saw the prospects for a fine community are obviously alive and well in Jamestown today." Jamestown has always been a community looking towards change, looking towards innovation. So let's talk about the innovation we're going to see in the coming year. As a city with 450 employees, sometimes we lack the ability to communicate effectively with our own departments and specifically with our citizens. We've created an internal working group and have challenged our community partners to help the city be better at sharing communication and data. Many cities have integrated new technologies to help departments share information and better serve residents. For example, maybe you've called the assessor's office asking about your tax bill. The assessor's office knows about your assessment values, but not your taxes. The assessor's office has to go to the clerk's office to get your physical bill, just to answer your questions. Wouldn't it be great if the assessor's office, or even you, could view your tax bills online? For another example, while our police officers have mobile computers in their vehicles, which provide information for each call, our fire department does not. Imagine a city having a system, when a call comes in, our fire department could see the call from the fire truck and know instantly where the nearest fire hydrants are. These are solutions cities across the country are implementing to better serve people. Let's talk about better-serving residents through increased communication, especially emergency communication. I envision a system where the city is able to communicate emergency alerts to residents through phone, email, text messages, and even social media. Even the ability to allow our citizens to sign up for messages on neighborhood activities, messages from the mayor's office or council members, or even simple things like road closures, would greatly improve the quality of life and communication to our residents. We live in a connected world full of data, and shouldn't the city be sharing that data as well? Many cities provide portals to citizens to show how many calls for service the police did last year, or how many number of leaves we picked up, or even the number of phone calls the mayor's office hits in a week. I can tell you, it's a lot. As a city, we need to be more transparent in the work we do, which is why I'm committed to working on opening up the city's data for all of our citizens, our partners, and our community members. It's time for us to be proactive, not reactive, in the work that we do. Now, I will tell you that safety of our public is a top priority, and I truly believe we have the best police and fire departments around, but we've neglected them for far too long. I've instructed my staff to immediately re-engage in negotiations with our police and fire to see if we can come to some middle ground for the good of our city. In addition, I'm proposing a comprehensive review of our fire operations and fire stations, many of which have become neglected over time. It's time we look to see what we need to do to improve fire safety in the city. Do we need to repair, rebuild, replace? I'm also asking our police and fire to be more engaged and interact more with the community they faithfully serve. Just today, the police chief and the fire chief accompanied me to Love Elementary School, where I proclaim this week as National Kindness Week. Kindness always matters in our community, but what mattered even more to those kids is seeing our public safety officers, showing them what kindness and friendliness looks like. We will soon be asking our officers to be a bigger part of our community, to invest in our kids and our neighbors, and give them their time to better understand the issues our community faces. But when talking about public safety, there's one large elephant in the room: ambulance and EMS services. Back in 1996, the city was handling fifty ambulance transports a week, and at the time, we contracted with All-Star to be the primary ambulance provider for the city of Jamestown. Back then, we thought it was too much to handle. However, last year alone, our fire department did over one thousand ambulance transports as All-Star was primarily out of service. This doesn't even take into account the endless or countless calls for service that brought neighboring municipalities into assist. This is simply not sustainable in our city. Just a few weeks ago, All-Star had notified the city it seeks to end its agreement for services. We're meeting with officials to better understand what All-Star's intentions are, but make no mistake, I will not let our citizens go without an ambulance service. We're happy to discuss our issues, but at the end of the day, my goal is to end a model that allows our contract ambulance company to not serve our residents. We will be putting out a request for proposal to find a service that will be our exclusive ambulance service here in the city and can guarantee minimum response times and dedicated ambulance service. When it comes to public safety, the city of Jamestown will always ensure that our residents are taken care of, no matter what. Now, it's no secret that our economic development is stagnant, and our housing stock is literally falling apart. In January alone, we demolished four buildings and have a slate of additional ones to go up. It's time for a new direction for our development department, and I'm proud to say we've got some great new individuals working to shape a better vision for our city. I've said time and time again, the city of Jamestown will become a hub for new technologies, and I'm proud to say that we're working towards that vision. In the first twenty-seven days, our development department has met with handfuls of developers looking to invest in Jamestown, and has started to revamp our loan programs to focus on business startup, sustainability, and growth. We now have a strong partnership with the Small Business Development Center and are aggressively working to partner with other organizations to improve the city's economic outlook. One crucial component in that is housing. It's often said that it takes a village to raise a child well, it takes a city of smart and thoughtful people to deal with our housing issues. The city will be creating a community housing group to bring organizations together that are working in the housing sphere and coordinate a plan for our city. We're looking at new laws on rental inspections to combat unsafe living conditions and fighting hand-in-hand with the county on lead abatement. And tonight, I'm proud to announce that through a grant with the New York State Attorney General, the city will be hiring an Associate Corporation Council whose mission it is to fight housing blight in our city. However, the biggest challenge that we must face is one of our own making. If we want to be a city for the future, we must modernize our own laws. We cannot be stuck in the 1980s watching every other successful New York city pass us by. For the first time in over fifteen years, I'll be calling a charter review commission to ensure our city's laws make us competitive and move us forward. I'm also proud to announce that we'll be working towards a committee to review and revitalize our antiquated zoning encodes, established back in 1969 and updated in 1998. Our society and our city has changed, so should our zoning code. Now, our tax structure has remained the same for ages. It's a system that encourages our current housing issues with rundown homes and vacant lots, and discourages our residential owners from investing in their own property. It's time we look at what other cities are doing to deal with taxation issues. Our goal is to lower the tax rates for the things we want to see more of: developed properties and home improvements, and start to tax the things we'd like to see less of: vacant lots and dilapidated properties. I've directed our assessment office to start to run different models for taxation in the city that will ease our residential property owners from the heavy tax burden they face. I've also started towards looking at ways to stop penalizing our homeowners for making repairs and start to phase in assessments for a longer period of time. We're leaving some of the tax burden to those making needed improvements to their homes. It's clear we have challenges in our city, but despite these challenges, I am most proud of the number of citizens that have stepped forward this year to be on boards and commissions, helping to make our city great. For the first time in a long time, this council tonight will approve a diverse group of people to serve in positions across the city, impacting so many parts of our daily lives. When I ran for office, I said partnerships and new voices would be key, and I meant it. Despite my warnings of our future, if you stay the current path, what I see most in this city is hope. Hope that together, as one community, we can solve problems and rise above challenges. We have much work to do this year, improving city communications, addressing public safety concerns, redeveloping our city, modernizing our tax structure. But I'm confident that hope and action will move Jamestown forward. But we must remember what Governor Rockefeller said to the people of Jamestown forty-nine years ago: "You've chosen initiative over complacency. You've chosen progress over decline. In many ways, this is a far different city than it was long ago." Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we give the opportunities for people to address the council. If you'd like to address the council this evening, please step up to one of the microphones with your home address, your name, home address, and five minute, uh, immature remarks to five minutes. Anyone like to address the council this evening?
My name is Doug Champ, and I lived at 225 Bowen Street of Jamestown for the last forty-one years, and tonight I want to congratulate our new young mayor on his vitality and his inspiration and his ideas. I look forward to helping him wherever I can, but that's not why I'm talking. The city is looking at a capital investment program for its future. One of the projects is the new municipal garage. I've shared some of my thoughts with the city council people about this, and I have some issues with it. Primarily, the location of where it's going to be planted on Crescent Street. It is adjacent to a city neighborhood, and we all know how heavy vehicles in terms of their movements and the noise and the factors of back-upping them on a regular basis, what that has to your home and your lifestyle. I believe there's better locations, and in the past administration, they really didn't look at other locations. In addition to that, this facility, four million dollars plus, twenty thousand square feet, will be put in a location where no longer can it be serviced by a thermal energy system. Some will say, well, maybe that's a good thing, we're going to eliminate that whole operation at some point in time, and I think that's foolish, considering the state of New York and it's adjusted with fossil fuels. We are in a position, and have been in a position since that system was built by me in 1984, and many very intelligent other people, as a prototype example of thermal energy delivery in this state and in this country. In addition to that, when we talk about fire service in this future, there is no better time than to connect with a municipal garage, a new firehouse. I would solemnly suggest that with this type of project, that that be incrementally developed within that building adjacent to it, and I would suggest that that area doesn't fit that type of footprint. There's a much better area on Harrison Street that not only can connect to the district heating system, but the lay-down area and the capability, and I'm not talking about the IDA property that is a linear development, I'm talking about the other side, where the fire department has a training area, and there's other lay-down areas the BPU has. It also would have access to Egress off two different streets. Crescent Street is a very narrow street in defining what a street is in this community. In addition to that, I think the future of innovation and technology must be incorporated within this design. If it's not, then we're really forsaking what our opportunities of creativity and innovations are. So does that mean that if it is built on Crescent Street, are we going to look at these types of designs? Geothermal heat pumps on-site? Are we going to look at solar applications on-site? Are we going to look at thermal storage on-site? Are we going to heat hydronically the floors? All this can be done to some extent by using our existing system. So what we're telling the people who might want to connect to this, that we're not going to build it next to that system, we're going to build it somewhere else. And I think that's unfortunate, considering over the years, we put all those seventy-some buildings hooked up to district heating, and now we have to look at fuel diversification for that system. We must look at not just fossil fuel, we must look at renewables and how they integrate as a fuel source. Also, electric storage, lithium-ion batteries, and a variety of other sources that are going to be paramount in the state and are going to be mandated to our communities. So now you're taking something away, which we had in play, to another location, which probably might serve their purpose, but in the long run, it only is a niche, and it's only a place where we could do so much more in another location. So I would solemnly consider that you rethink when you do site plan development of municipal buildings, is this really, really the best site? Because in the past, we've put things together, and we really haven't thought them out, both environmentally and economically. So it's important for you to consider this move, because it's a big project, but I think you could fold it into a much more logical build and include a new fire station with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening?
Evening, my name is Anthony Toda. I live at 144 Clifton Avenue in Jamestown. I just want to address some of the issues that we, outgoing and incoming here, everybody's talking about, and I believe that's going to be a bond issue for some various capital improvements. That bond issue was passed on by a lame duck mayor, a lame duck administration onto this new mayor. We had an annexation that was also restarted last year prior to the new mayor. We've got several issues that have been burdensome on the new mayor. We have a, we have some union issues in regards to the police that have been ongoing since 2016, so there's a backlog with probably cost of living and raises and other things that the police may want. We also have union issues with the fire department. What has happened in this administration in the last twenty years has been neglect. This bond issue for equipment should have been, there should have been a situation where equipment was renewed prior to twenty years, rather than burdening a new administration with a lot of costs. Now, the mayor has spoken about housing. We are really on a thin thread here when it comes to expenditures versus revenues coming into the city. We're losing revenues, we're losing housing. Now, a couple of years ago, I was at the Chautauqua mortgage, the tax auction, and the person that was, the auctioneer was kind of against what was happening with the land bank. Now, the land bank has been responsible, especially in the city of Jamestown, for demolition, a lot of demolition in the last two or three years. They're beginning money from the state, obviously, from the suit that was incurred, and that's how they get their capital, but they are pro demolition. They finance the city for demolition. If you want to build a housing stock, including vacant lots in a city with taxes such as this, is not going to be the answer, because you're not going to get anybody back into a vacant lot. Chances are, not in a good neighborhood anymore. Obviously, we just had a shooting here last weekend. And get them to build a house and pay the high taxes that they have. These are the issues that you're going to, that the mayor is facing, they have been thrust upon him, and we need to start thinking about, well, what can you do as far as rebuilding jobs, rebuilding the housing stock, and putting more money into public funding? We just don't have it, it's not the answer. Bringing in bond issues for capital improvements that will put the city in more debt is not going to balance the city budget. There should be, if it's legally possible, a situation where money can be given as an incentive, as the mayor stated, for housing redevelopment. Not only that, but money coming in, as the grants have been coming in for years, for the wrong ideas to actually encourage tax-exempt property. Money coming in so we can give tax breaks to businesses who want to invest in the city of Jamestown, so that money can be funded and won't hurt the city, and in the long run, they can, when established city comes here, business comes here, it's not only about new jobs, it's about putting them back on the tax rolls and bringing in revenues. We have a serious revenue problem in this city: high taxes and demolition of houses. I don't see how that's going to help and that's going to get any of us out of this problem we're in. If this standard continues where you keep taking parcels of taxable properties and demolishing them, and then keep bringing the city into debt because you're putting money where it should have been placed by the Trump administration a long, long time ago. This is the issues we're having, including the union issues, has put the city behind, really, really behind the eight ball, and it's really going to be very, very difficult unless you get some financial planning to boost the grants, to boost the housing market, and grants to build revenues by bringing businesses back into the city of Jamestown. That's the only way I think you can do it, and hopefully some of that will be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council this evening?
Hi, my name is Christopher Blacy. I reside at 20 Chestnut Street. In 2015, I retired from the United States Army, and I chose to make Jamestown my home. I'm not a native from here. And I chose to make it my home for a couple of reasons. I did grow up at Camp Agassan, I grew up at that YM City on Fourth Street, and this city adopted me as one of their own. And after sustaining the injuries I did in Afghanistan and my career came to a halt, I was greeted by a bunch of town folk here at my home, with my brand-new home I just purchased decorated. I still think the best times are ahead of us. When we have good, honorable people leading us with good intentions and a community that will come together, there's nothing we can't accomplish. A lot of people are leaving this area, the jobs are leaving this area, people are moving where the other jobs are. I chose to come to this town, and I chose to make this town my home, with my wife and my six kids. And I also want to encourage, and it's great to hear that, Mayor, that you're going to support the police and the firemen, because I couldn't have done what I did on the battlefields of Iraq and Afghanistan if I had to worry about who was protecting my wife and my children. I like having my firemen sitting in their fire stations, ready to go, and I like seeing police force that is properly equipped, properly trained, and properly led. Once again, I thank you guys for serving, and I'm proud to call Jamestown my home.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
John Zabrowski, two Timber Lane, Jamestown, New York. It's a new mayor, but also, the council has been reconstituted a little bit as well. You have a big decision in front of you, really, about the annexation. The annexation is ill-conceived and really not the right move for the city. To some extent, it looks like a diversionary tactic. For the past three or four years, you voted to raise taxes. You voted to spend and borrow thirteen million dollars. You haven't settled police and fire. There's been a lot of money spent on police and fire, there's been a lot of money spent on the annexation. You have the power, you, the city council, have the power to end it. You should make that decision. You've spent only on one law firm that we know about, on Shenigan King, over a half million dollars. The payback is a hundred and seventy thousand, thereabouts, per year. So you're already behind the eight ball by three or four years, the payback which you've spent on attorneys, just on one firm. You've also spent money, ATU-tap staff time, you've spent money, I'm sure, in other analyses that you've done. There was nothing compelling at the December thirtieth meeting, public meeting. There was only one person from Jamestown that spoke for the annexation. So it's time to get to work, as Mr. Sunquist said. So let's end this diversion on the annexation. All we've done is split and really alienated our neighbors for no real good gain, no good reason. And what we haven't heard from you as the city council is, well, what's the justification for all of this? A hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year that you're going to pay back in three, four, five years? Will one of you or some of you go on the record to tell us what the justification is? Because really, if you look at the public record, that really didn't happen. And it didn't happen at the public meeting on December thirtieth. So again, you've got the power to end this annexation charade. You need to do it. You need to do it tonight or whenever you can because it's really a diversion from all of the things that Mr. Sunquist talked about, that this city needs and needs to look forward to. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Last one more time, anyone else like to address the council? Yeah, we'll move on with our petitions and recommendations. At this time, we'll move on to reports from the standing committees. We'll start with our finance committee and Councilwoman Karuba.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a resolution authorizing the payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, hi, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the French Historical Society for historical and educational services to be rendered to the citizens of Jamestown for the year 2020 in an amount of sixteen thousand dollars, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
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 Russell.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Jamestown Urban Renewal Agency for the 2020 fiscal year, subject to approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the James Prendergast Library Association for library services to be rendered to the citizens of Jamestown for the year 2020 in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, subject to approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This was an increase of the last year's bracket by fifty thousand dollars, just as an example.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve the water service agreement between the Town North Army, Town of Us, and the Jamestown Board of Public Utilities pursuant to Section C-54 of the Jamestown City Charter, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars principal and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred, eighty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents for six months' interest on public improvement bonds, Series A, issued April twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the payment of one hundred five thousand dollars principal and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for six months' interest on public improvement bonds issued in November nineteen, two thousand thirteen, to be issued in two thousand thirteen.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye. We'll now move on to the committee chairwoman, called Ellen Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing firefighters Emily Webster and Andrew Caruso to attend the fire investigation course at the New York State Academy of Fire Science to be held at Montour Falls, New York, on February twenty-fourth through March sixth, two thousand twenty, with expenses paid pursuant to Section seventy-seven B of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing firefighter Jeffrey Hatch to attend the fire service instructor course at the New York State Academy of Fire Science, to be held in Montour Falls, New York, on February third through seventh, two thousand twenty, with expenses paid pursuant to Section seventy-seven B of the General Municipal Law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Chautauqua Regional Community Foundation in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a portion of the New York New State Park State JTNY, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Center for Resolution and Justice, two hundred East Claire Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, for four hundred and thirty-two square feet of leased space on the third floor of the municipal building in the amount of three hundred twenty-five dollars per month for the time period of January first, two thousand twenty, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with John S. Crisello, CPA, PC, three fifteen North Main Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven zero one, to perform the single audit for the city of Jamestown, including the Department of Development for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, including four thousand, six hundred dollars for the Department of Development each year. Plus expenses for report reproduction, perform the deferred compensation plan for the employees of the city of Jamestown audit for the years ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, in the amount not to exceed six thousand, five hundred dollars, plus expenses for report reproduction, and perform the New York State Department of the Transportation single audit for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred, sixty dollars, plus expenses for report reproduction, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank John Crisello for his years. This will be his last year of service performing this audit that he has done for many years. We appreciate all his hard work.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
The Finance, I have a resolution to suspend the hiring freeze and authorize, authorizing the filling of one deputy comptroller in the city comptroller's office. And this is one retirement that was funded in the twenty-twenty general envelope.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye. Now we'll move on to our Public Works Committee, as Chairman, Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Jeffrey Layman, PD, Director of Public Works, and Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Conservation, to enter into agreement, to enter agreement with Synthex, thirteen seventy West Palms Street, Erie PA, sixteen five oh one, for uniforms purchased via U.S. Communities Cooperative Fitting Contract, number R-DB-19002, for the time period, February first, two thousand twenty, to January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents per year, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with CPL twelve seventy-nine North Main Street, Jamestown, New York, one four seven oh one, to direct services for the proposed new fleet maintenance facility for a speed not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, subject to approval of the Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just want to, I don't know that this is just to cover the cost of the architectural development of this potential fleet maintenance facility.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Nay.
Lewis.
Aye. We'll now move on to the Public Safety Committee, and we will be, a resolution read by Councilwoman Ryan Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution reappointing Nancy Alarosa to the Office of Commissioner of Eas for a period of two years.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye. That concludes our standing committees. Do we have any report from special committees? Any report from city officers? Report from councilmen, our administrative boards? We'll move on to unfinished business.
Councilmembers, in pursuit of the authority vested in me by the charter of Set City, I hereby nominate Jeffrey Layman, six oh three Lakeview Avenue, to be reappointed Director of Public Works, Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Conservation, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Crystal Surdeck, eleven Timberland Drive, to be appointed Director of Development, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Elliot Romando, four oh three Margers, to be reappointed Corporation Counsel, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Signed, Edward Sunquist, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion to vote collectively on these appointments. So moved by Councilwoman Eklund. Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye. And then the clerk, please poll the council on the appointments. So move again. Councilwoman Eklund. Lot of stuff tonight. Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye, Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eklund.
Aye.
Ryan Hurd.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye, Lewis.
Aye. At this point, we would ask the department heads to just stand right here so that they can be sworn in. Jason, what department are you? Congratulations. At this point, we'll, the clerk will read the board and commission appointments that were tabled in the January first meeting as well.
Stephen Noble, twenty-nine Chapin Street, to be reappointed a member of the Board of Electrical Examiners, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Gregory Nigerson, four twenty South Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Board of Public Utilities, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Lam Houston, one fifteen Arcade Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Board of Public Utilities, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Kenneth Mark, forty-two Hotchkiss Street, to be appointed a member of the Board of Public Utilities,[1711.82] Utilities, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Gregory Noon, three forty-five Norton Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Jamestown Bourbon Renewal Agency, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. In pursuit of the authority vested in me by the charter of the city, Antarctica Three, Section eleven C of the Domestic Relations Law, Gregory Rad, five eighteen Lakeview Avenue, to be reappointed a marriage officer, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Paul Whitford, fifty-eight Harris Avenue, to be reappointed a marriage officer, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Emile Krausek, one twenty-eight Martin Road, to be appointed a marriage officer, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. John Bauer, one thirty-three Uglut Avenue, to be reappointed a member of Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Adam Burgay, two sixty-one Towne Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Michael Lauren, fifty-one Durant Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Planning Commission, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. Christina Miller, one forty-two Wilton Avenue, to be appointed a member of the Property Rehab and Conservation Board of Appeals, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Russell Decker Jr., one fifty-three Calix Street, to be appointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. John Bauer, one thirty-three Uglut Avenue, to be reappointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council, as the Parks Recreation and Conservation Commission Number, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. David B. Anderson, one twenty-six Wilton Avenue, to be reappointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council, representing the Chautauqua Watershed Conservancy, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Antoine Weeners, four fifty Delaware Lane, to be appointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council, as a representative of the Robert Fory Peterson Institute, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Leo Baydon, twenty forty-two Shady Side Road, to be appointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council, as a representative of the Bloodline Society of Jamestown, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Jennifer Lemias, three fifty Second Street, to be reappointed a member of the Riverfront Management Council, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. First of Kelly, six and seven Cam Street, to be reappointed a member and Chairman of the Veterans Memorial Commission, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Andy Cal, one Holden Street, to be reappointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Scott Conveney, forty-nine Brookside State Drive, Falkner, New York, to be appointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Joshua Miller, six twenty-six Hasser Street, to be appointed a member of the Veterans Memorial Commission, fully unexpired, term of George Metalli, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Pursuits of the authority vested in me by the bylaws of the Jamestown Local Development Corporation, I hereby, I am hereby appoint Pete Shera, two oh nine Tiny Street, as an at-large member of Jamestown Local Development Corporation, term to expire thirty, December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Margaret Calton Meyer, twenty-eight Hoover East Street, as an at-large member of the Local Development Corporation, term to expire December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Signed, Edward Sungus, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, do I have a motion to vote collectively on all these appointments? So moved by Councilman Eclon. Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye. Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye. Nelson. Aye. Eclon.
Aye.
Reinhart.
Aye.
Russell. Aye. Dulce.
Aye. And do I have a motion to accept the appointments? So moved by Councilman Nelson. Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye. Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye. Nelson. Aye. Eclon.
Aye.
Russell. Aye.
And do I have a motion to accept the appointments? So moved by Councilman Nelson. Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye. Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye. Nelson. Aye. Eclon.
Aye.
Russell. Aye.
And do I have a motion to accept the appointments? So moved by Councilman Nelson. Clerk, please poll the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Samuel Salini, Deputy Fire Chief, to purchase from Strikeford P.O. Box nine three three zero eight Chicago, Illinois, six zero six seven three dash three three zero eight one, MTS power load system with a Power Pro XP stretcher in the amount of forty-five thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-five cents, subject to the approval of the Corporation Council as to form. I also note that the funding for this purchase will come from the twenty nineteen Smart City Capital Bond and is desperately needed because this piece of equipment recently became, I don't know if fund usable is the right term, but damaged enough that it's jeopardizing the safety of the firefighters and the patients that they pick up, so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to make a comment that I did pay a visit to the fire department. I talked to some of the firemen about the current equipment and took a look at it myself over the weekend because of the amount of the new equipment. I also inquired about if there was any kind of grant money out there that the city could get in order to pay for this equipment rather than us paying for it. There has been grants that have been applied over the last couple of years and the city has denied those grants, so the funding went to other areas that were more in need. I just wanted to make sure that there was no money that was left on the table before we, the citizens, strongly checked for this piece of equipment, but this piece of equipment is needed for the safety of the citizens and then also stated any potential injuries that the firemen from caring patients.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye. Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye. Nelson. Aye. Eclon.
Aye.
Reinhart.
Aye.
Russell. Aye. Dulce.
Aye. The next two resolutions will be read by Councilwoman Karuba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution adopting the environmental assessment form for the annexation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I will make a comment. I will be, I would like to recuse myself from this call, given the fact that I am currently employed by the Department of Public Safety.
Thank you. Clerk, please poll the council on the recusal by Councilwoman Eclon.
Ms. Sheldon, aye. Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye. Nelson. Aye. Eclon.
Aye.
Russell. Aye. Dulce.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution suspending the hiring freeze and authorizing the filling of the one full-time Associate Corporation Counsel, one full-time position funded through the zombie two-point-oh grant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Clerk, please poll the council.
Ms. Sheldon, aye. Karuba.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye. Nelson.